Okay, we're live. Hello, everyone. Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. We're joined today by our whole team. What's up, guys?
Hello.
Hi.
We're so excited to be here today and share with you a brand new training that I think is going to really kind of pop the lid open on ideas for you. If you feel stuck about what to say, what to write, you know, what to offer, you know, to get people to actually sign up to be leads so that you've got people to talk to you about Young Living. We're going to talk about that today. Greg has got some really cool stuff to share, some updates, especially if you are someone who is moving things off of Facebook and onto the Get Oiling platform for your groups. We've got a huge announcement for that. And yeah, so who's excited to hear about this stuff? Maybe a quick show of hands. Yes, we all want to get out of Facebook these days. All right, so if you're brand new, welcome. We're excited to have you here, excited to deliver this training. And so I'm going to get right into the slides, do the training here in the first section, and then we will get into some announcements and then a couple of live website reviews, as well as Q and A on any topic. If you came here looking for help, go ahead and get into the Q and A now. Our whole team is here and we can start answering questions right away. If you're here live and you need that assistance, and of course, if it requires a little more visual walkthrough, we can spend our time at the close of our call on that as well. So without further ado, let's get into some slide sharing. All right, so let me video off. Excellent. Thanks, team. All right, so today we're going to talk about how to know what to say and write to get Young Living leads. Really, what this is, you guys, is an overall content marketing business strategy training, right? It's kind of a mouthful, but I want to help you make sense of how all this stuff works together. You know that on our platform, you can have your own website, you can email, you can capture leads with landing pages, you can even sell information inside of our vaults. But how exactly does that get people signed up into Young Living? It's a pretty common refrain, pretty common question, and we're going to talk about how all these things work together to make it easier for you, to make it fun for you, to get out there and share your message with the world so that the right people are showing up and saying yes to getting started with you. So let's get to it. If you came here today with questions, if you need help, go ahead. We're here for you. Add those to the Q and A on the live call. If you want to join a live call in the future, and you're watching this as a replay, hello, we are at getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. So in today's training, you're going to learn how to know what to say and write. You're going to learn how all of this works together. You're going to learn some exciting new website updates. Then we're going to dive into those Q and A and site reviews after the training. So head over and get on the list if you're watching this as a recording so that you're able to join us live on a future call. Now, maybe just a quick show of hands here, you guys. Do you ever get stuck with figuring out what to say or write or post? Maybe you sit down at an email. How many of you sat down to write an email and it took you an hour or a Facebook post, and you're just staring at the screen? You're like, what am I, what am I even supposed to say? Like, I want them to buy oils, but like, I'm not kind of supposed to say, hey, buy oils, right? So what do you do? What do you say? What do you come up with, right? This is a challenging thing to figure out, especially if you're just getting started with all this. So if you're confused over what to offer in a funnel as well to generate leads, we're going to cover what that looks like for you today. How many of you, maybe if we could take the hands down real quick, I'm actually kind of curious, just maybe a show of hands of who's here. How many of you feel like you have really nailed a lead generating offer and you've created a funnel? So let's just say, maybe you are in Martha Creach's Gopher Gold, or you've been through our Lead Generation workshop. We've got, we've got a couple of you guys. All right, awesome, awesome. So we've got some folks who are getting it. Understand that this is an iterative process. You will grow in your understanding, the more you implement, and everything that you make won't be perfect, right? Like, we know this about life. So we should hold ourselves not to those idealized expectations, but hold ourselves gently with the understanding that the more we do on this, the better we get, the more we grow, and the more effective this is. So by the time we're done today, guys, this is a really big promise I'm making you, and I'm here to deliver on this, but by the time we're done today, you're going to see the big picture that's been setting off light bulbs for my clients. I created this visual model that I'm going to share with you today to explain some of the higher level concepts and strategy that I work with with clients one-on-one. And I've started using it on private calls that I have with folks who are in my own funnels, and it's really been helping a lot to just kind of break the glass, like, show you what's on the other side, right? This is going to help you to always know what you are going to speak about, right? And know that you are always speaking directly to that ideal person. We're going to also, from there, once we've got that done, you can tap into a never-ending flow of content topics for blog, email, social posts, and more. You never get hung up again because you're clear on what you're talking about and why and what it's going to do. And then finally, you'll be able to create those lead magnets and funnels that make people want to get started working with you. All right, so let's just get a couple of things straight out of the gate here. This, we'll kind of consider this to be housekeeping, okay? You want more people to sign up for Young Living, right? Show of hands, is this correct? You're here today because ultimately, you'll want a lot more people to sign up for Young Living, right? Okay, so let's talk about Dunbar's number. Have you guys ever heard of Dunbar's number? Basically, and you can Wikipedia this, Dunbar's number more or less says that the average human in today's day and age is not really capable of maintaining more than 150 to 200 relationships, right? So the likelihood of our sort of reach, right? If we're talking about this in the context of having people to share Young Living with, we've got about 150 to 200 friends now. If you've been growing your, you know, your connections on social media, your network on social platforms, then perhaps you have more of the quote-unquote "friends" than this number represents, right? And that's fine, but we need more warm market, right? We're clear on that, right? We gotta have a bigger warm market if we want to grow a big team. So let's talk about what a warm market is for you. What a warm market is are people who know you, like you, and trust you, right? These are people who recognize your face, people who would pick up the phone when you call, people who would open an email that you send them, okay? These are people who respect your recommendations. They trust you, and they see what you say and what you share as relevant, and they want to hear more from you, okay? We're trying to, our aim here, and what you're doing with the Get Oiling platform and with Lead Generation and all this stuff that we're talking about, when you're sitting down to write a post, write an email, what have you, your goal is to grow your warm market so that you can have more people to share Young Living with, right? So that's kind of the motivation behind everything here. You want more people who know you, like you, trust you, respect what you have to say, and they see what you have to say as relevant to them, and they want more of what you have to say. Okay, so how do we grow that warm market? One old-school, belly-to-belly way, highly recommend this, referrals and introductions from other people that you know. This is probably, this is where social proof has its origins before the internet ever existed. If you meet someone through someone else, you're going to have an instant, instant degree of connection that's not available in other ways, right? So this is always tried and true to grow your warm market. You should always be doing this, right? You could also start conversations with anyone, everyone, everywhere you go, like, in the line at the grocery store, or while you're pumping gas. This is the stuff that they used to teach back in the day, in the early days of network marketing, before the internet. You could also spend a bajillion hours trying to make friends in social media groups and DMs. How many of you guys have dumped dozens and dozens and dozens of hours into just trying to expand your friends list on your social platform, right? Just in hopes that you might have enough warm market, right? So what I'm going to share with you today, if you've done that kind of work, is going to help you. And if you already have a small sort of, if you have a Dunbar's market-level number of connections on social media, that's fine, too, because what we're looking for is hyper relevance and getting more people who want to hear from you on your list. But I digress. Finally, what you can do to grow that warm market is to show up and share relevant, valuable information with your ideal crowd to build trust and a following, right? These are all ways that you can grow your pool of people with whom to share Young Living and then hopefully to have them sign up, right? What we're going to focus on is down here, how to show up and share relevant, valuable information with our ideal crowd to build trust and a following. And then, once that person, once these people are in your warm market, and they show interest in something that you're sharing, you're just going to do exactly what you would do otherwise, right? We don't reinvent the wheel using our platform, building automations. This is not supposed to automatically just open the doors and everybody runs to your Young Living link and signs themselves up. That's not how this works. What we're doing is we are expanding greatly the number of people that you have available to talk to, and then helping to make those people more and more interested so that they come to you. All right, are you following? Quick show of hands. We agree, that's, this is where we're going. We want to make this easy for you to sign people up because they're coming to you knowing that you have something that they want. All right, so now that we've got that cleared up, who wants to see a visual model? Who's a visual learner and would really love to kind of see a picture of how all this works? Really excited to show you this. These are kind of fun to make. I've never really been like a graphics person, but I definitely benefit from like visual representations of things. So, all right, how many of you guys remember these? The Everlasting Gobstopper. I was so obsessed with getting one of these when I was a kid. I begged my mom, and I'm sure it terrified her. So let's talk about what this is. This is enticing on the outside. It's got beautiful colors. Everything a kid wants. It's like a pound of sugar that you can carry with you that lasts forever, okay? It's made of the stuff that we wanted when we were kids, anyway, and it's designed to draw you toward the center, right? All right, so remember this representation here. We've got this thing. It's a sphere. The stuff on the outside makes us want to dig in and get it down to the middle, right? All right, so does this look familiar? This is our model of how all of this works together. This is your 30,000-foot view, all right? So it's enticing on the outside, and what does that mean? It's the stuff that you see. It's the stuff that's, it's a lead group. It's the social posts. It's webinars, if you do them. It's your website, blog content, live events, if you're doing classes. It's your warm market, your referrals. It's all this stuff that people can see easily, right? Stuff that's enticing, things that you're sharing that are interesting to them, right? It's made of the stuff that they want, the results that they want, and we'll get into what that means in just a minute. And it is designed to draw them toward the center. All right, now, don't fret. We're going to break this whole thing down. That's why we're doing this training. All right, so out here on the outside, potential leads are going to interact with this outside layer, again, with your blogs, videos, social posts, lead group, video content, referrals, warm market, live events, all of this stuff is the stuff that they interact with first, okay? Now, if they love what they find on that outer layer, then they exchange their contact information with you for a piece of your unique offering, this thing in the middle, and they become a lead at that point. Now, this happens inside a funnel. A lot of you know what a funnel is, but this is what this is. What the funnel is, is that exchange of contact information for a thing that they want, right? A piece of your unique offering, and then a sequence of messages that guide them toward taking action and getting access to that unique offering in the middle, okay? So they get the thing in exchange for sharing their contact information, and the thing that they get is called a lead magnet. So leads are people who like what you have to say, enough to say yes to continue hearing from you. Going to repeat, that's really important. Leads are people who like what you have to say, enough to say yes to continue hearing from you. They're not leads until they have said, yes, I want to continue hearing from you, right? They need to have crossed that barrier. They interacted with the outside layer here of the stuff that you put out into the world, and then they liked that enough to say, you know what, I want to take a step further inside, okay? So these are the people who are most likely to want to hear your recommendations for them, and these are the people who, if we build this right, are going to be great leads for you for Young Living. Now, I want you to notice something really important here. Your unique offering at the center of this model is not Young Living. This is really important. The reason why Young Living is not the thing at the center of this model is because Young Living is not the thing that that person knows that they want yet. What's in the middle of your model has to be something that they know they want right now. Now, notice down at the bottom, this thing gets oiled, you guys. It's not like you don't introduce Young Living once they're in the middle. It's that they're not going to follow the breadcrumb trail to the middle if they don't like the taste of the bread, and if they don't know that Young Living is what they need, they're not going to eat that bread, right? Okay, all roads from the outside of this model lead into the middle. We have to build and then communicate from the outs, from the inside out, so that people can easily find their way from the outside in. If you've ever seen me train on Simon Sinek's Start With Why, the Golden Circle, this is the same concept here, you guys. You have to have your, your why and what it does for them in the middle, and then you offer them a way to make their own choice to cross the barriers and move toward the middle. And aren't the people who come to you who say, I'm really interested in this essential oil thing that I see you sharing, aren't the people who come to you that you didn't have to drag or push the people who are the easiest to work with, right? Wouldn't, don't you want a whole lot of people who are self-motivated and curious of their own accord to be your members and your builders? That's what we're doing here. We're intentionally developing that and providing opportunities for people to become that inside of this model, okay? But we have to communicate from the inside out. Now, if we don't build from the inside out, our strategy, what we say, what we're talking about, and why, then we don't have a solid structure, right? So if we're just going out and blogging because we believe we should be blogging, or if we're trying to draw too straight a line between whatever it is that you want to share to get a lead and them buying Young Living, if we're trying to draw too straight of a line, we have a very collapsible structure, okay? So let's get back to the elephant in the room here. How do we show up and share relevant, valuable information with our ideal crowd to build trust and a following? I mean, that's, that's the whole point here, right? Is to do this so that people lead themselves to the middle. And you're probably wondering, too, well, what the heck do I put in the middle? We're going to get to that. I'm going to show you some examples. So is this where you're stuck? Are you stuck here? Quick show of hands. How do I show up and share relevant, valuable information with my ideal crowd to build trust and a following? All right, so if this is where you're stuck, let's talk about your core offering, which dictates what your content is, right? What lives at the center of that model dictates what you say on the outside of it, okay? Importantly, the core offering and content are not about Young Living. If people want to learn all about Young Living, they can go to Young Living's website. It's not all about the promos. This is something that you send to your existing members, and it's not, guys, it's not about the product either, because remember, what we put in the center of our model has to be something that they already know they want. They don't know they want Young Living yet, okay? It's about what they want right now. So just to give you a perspective here, you know those people who only show up to see you when it's time to sell you something? If we aren't talking about what they want right now, we're kind of being that guy. We don't want to be that guy, right? They, that person, this guy here, he's not delivering information that's relevant or valuable to you. He's delivering information that's relevant and valuable to him. And that's no way to make friends, right? That's no way to build trust and get people to want to know more and to lead themselves through those doorways that you introduced toward the center of what you do. It's not easy to build trust with transactional relationships. So how can you be of service first? So you can make a lot of friends. So you've got endless people with which to share Young Living. So first, we're going to start with what you know, that we're going to talk about right now. This is what you put in the center of your model. Start with what you know, and you're here right now. You know something, right? People join Young Living because of you, okay? They stick around because of Young Living. Remember this. It's you. You're the reason. What you know, your unique perspective, what you bring to the table, is why people say yes, and they stick around with Young Living because it's great, okay? So even if you're brand new, there is something that you know right now that you didn't know before you got started, right? Quick show of hands. How many of you know something new? Even if it's just the thing that seems super tiny to you, you know something new that you did not know before you got started with Young Living? Absolutely, everybody here, right? So you have, you, every single one of you, you have a unique way that you integrate Young Living products into your life. Or bonus, if you have an adjacent business or practice, if you are a coach, if you're a massage therapist, a chiropractor, you know, any kind of wellness practitioner, you have a unique way, a protocol, if you will, that you use to integrate Young Living products into your life. So you've got your own stash of secrets. You've got your own special sauce. That's what people are going to sign up for. That's what we're going to put in the center of your model. You've got a win that you can help them get. You have won with Young Living, right? You've got a result, as a result of what you know now. How has Young Living improved something that was already important to you? Think about that for a minute. Maybe share it in the comments so everyone can kind of bounce this around off of each other. How has Young Living improved something that was already important to you? Think about an obsession that you had, a thing that you're passionate about, a hobby that you had, or something like that that existed before Young Living was a part of your life, that there's, that some part of Young Living, whether it's product lines, a single product, opportunity, community, new perspective, how has Young Living improved something that was already important to you? All right, now I'm going to give you some examples. And again, these are direct examples that we're going to put in the center of our model so that we radiate out the things that need to be shared, that are relevant, that make people opt themselves in, okay? So are you, let's just say, for example, maybe you're obsessed with organization. You own all of Marie Kondo's books. You've watched the whole Netflix series. You have a Pinterest board and a VIP account with a Container Store, okay? Are you obsessed with organization? Are you a paleo pre-Madonna? Were you following Dave Asprey before anybody knew about him? Are you a glitzy grandma? Are you baddie? And I mean, B-A-D-D-I-E. And, you know, are you a DIY diva? Were you already crunchy and making your own soap before you found Young Living? Are you a wondrous wedding planner? Do you have an eye? Do you have an eye and the ability to create ambiance and a feeling of expansive space? What is your thing? You notice how none of these are directly oil-adjacent, right? These are things that are just things in your life that are important to you, that are important to people that you're connected with. You just happen to oil them. So what do you know how to do that other people want to know, too? And then, how do you oil it? So let's get a mindset check. All right, now, you may be thinking this right now. If you're not, congratulations, but I may need to stop you if you are. It does not matter if someone else is teaching the same thing. There are enough people in the world right now who need to hear this from you. They need your perspective, your story, your voice. There are people, billions of people in the world, right? There are enough people that need to hear this from you for this to move the needle and for you to achieve the aims that you have with this business and beyond, okay? If it's coming to you, it's the right thing. All right, so first, we're going to determine your unique offering. That's this thing in the middle here. Now, this can be a sequence of steps from, you know, step one through step seven. These could be pillars of understanding where there are maybe four core concepts that you need to understand to be able to live a certain way, get a certain thing done, understand a thing. You could also have guidance, guided support and resources, you know? So maybe for instance, if you're helping someone transition into a gluten or dairy-free lifestyle, and you've got a support group, that's an example of that. You can have challenges. Challenges are so popular. How many of you guys, quick show of hands, how many of you guys have run challenges before, either on Facebook or with Get Oiling? So many of you, right? I'm actually going to be giving you an example of a challenge today. It's a great way to get people engaged when you're launching something. You could also get a little bit more complicated with online courses, group coaching, or one-on-one coaching, no matter what you choose for your unique offering, it's ultimately going to get oiled, all right? This is going to be the thing that lives at the core of what you do. Remember, importantly, so, so, so importantly, whatever this is, it's not Young Living and it's not oils, okay? It's something that you know or do that gets oiled, all right? Quick show of hands. You following? We got to think about a thing, and it is not going to be an oily thing, but it's something that in some way oils fit into it. And if you're still kind of lost with this, don't worry, about to give you an example. All right, so I'm going to use the example of being obsessed with organization. So that's going to be the thing that lives in the core of my model, obsessed with organization. So I'm going to run a decluttering challenge, right? How many of you guys would sign up for a decluttering challenge? I'd sign myself up. All right, so in three weeks, we're going to clear out, clean up, and curate. Sounds like fun, right? So in three short weeks, you'll go from constant clutter cycle to finally breathing free in a home that stays clean. You notice how I've said absolutely nothing about Young Living or oils yet, but isn't this something that you would buy? Like, would you buy this in three short weeks? We're going to go from a constant cycle of clutter to finally breathing free in a home that stays clean. Do you think people in your network, if you're maybe someone who's obsessed with organization, do you think that there are people you're connected to who would feel no qualms about happening and seeing how you're helping people solve this systemic problem in their house in three weeks? It's a huge value proposition, right? And there's nothing weird about it. It's, this is, I'm not pitching anything at the outset. I'm talking about something you want, all right? So let's talk about this. It's a decluttering challenge. Week one, we're going to clear out. What that, what that's going to mean is that we're just going to follow the Marie Kondo method. I might have an affiliate link for her book on Amazon or Audible or something like that. We're also going to, in week one, ditch toxic products. So maybe I'm going to do a brief training here on the, on the nasty products that you should be looking out for. Maybe I can provide a cheat sheet or something like this that actually tells them what ingredients to avoid, but they can print out and take with them to the store. Now, in week two, we're going to clean up, literally clean up. We're going to, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to share some of my DIY recipes for wood polish and, you know, and a window cleaner, right? Now, we're going to literally clean, and I'm going to talk about thieves, because now I've, I've offered value. This course is not just about using Young Living, but I'm going to talk about thieves here, because I'm like, hey, guys, we want to talk about organization and simplicity. Let me talk about the one product that I use that does 27 things in my house, and it's the only bottle that I need to have under my sink. That's a pretty huge value proposition. And these people are already in here. Now, you have an angle to approach them with that they're going to understand and see the value in, too, right? Then, in week three, we're going to curate. We're going to design and decorate our home, and then intentionally restock with simplicity in mind, and I'm going to give them a buyer's guide of the things that I use that will absolutely include Young Living products. All right, quick show of hands. Do you see how I'm structuring this challenge? Do you see how this is not about Young Living, but do you see how it gets oiled? Okay, so do you see what's in it for them, most importantly? Kick the clutter challenge from constant clutter cycle to a consistently clean sanctuary in three weeks. This is going to scream at them, you need this, ma, you need this. So they're going to want this, right? Don't say anything about oils, nothing about Young Living. We are showing them what's in it for them, right? We are providing value to them, but at the same time, I mean, this is really no different than the stuff that I already know. And I mean, this, this stuff feels obvious to me, but you know what? It's magic to them because you're showing them how to do something that they don't know how to do, that you know how to do now, and better than you ever did before, because you know how to integrate these products into a bigger structure, right? And do you see how many different ways you could oil it beyond just what I said there? All right, so how do we get them there? Once we've established this thing that's at the core, how do we get them to the core? First, we got to give away a win. We've got to show them, build trust, show them that we know what we're talking about, and we don't have a problem with giving them a piece of what we've worked hard to do because we've got proof that this is something that's going to help them, right? If you love this, you're going to love this thing over here, all right? We have to build trust. So let's talk about this. What I'm going to give away here is a lesson from week three, which is create a Pin-worthy palace on a budget with my cheap decor checklist. Again, not oily, don't talk about Young Living, but it is tied into the organization of this course, tied into the structure of this challenge that I'm giving away, right? So remember, this is our, our structure. I'm going to give them something from week three. Are you guys following this? Quick show of hands. Do you see how I'm offering something that to this person is going to find very valuable? I'm going to show you how to create a Pinterest-worthy palace on a budget with my cheap decor checklist. Pretty cool, right? All right, so we give this checklist away to people who register on a landing page that offers it. So what that means is, is we have a landing page. That's where they enter their name and their email, their phone, their contact information, and then they get the lead magnet, that checklist, and then they get a campaign, which is a series of messages that leads to a conversation with you, then they become your Get Oiling member. You just planned a funnel. Do you guys see how the funnel works? Do you see how this contextually connects? Are the gears turning? I want to hear from you guys. Share in the chat, what do you want to offer that'll get people engaged, that'll get them excited and get them open to just having that conversation with you, just making them warm market so that you can have the conversation and get them onto Young Living, right? All right, so let's talk about how they find the funnel. We make the funnel, right? But if this is not, if you build it, they will come thing, right? So how do we get them to find the funnel so that they can get the checklist, become your leads, and then eventually sign up? So now it's time to create visibility. Now it's time to do all this stuff on the outside that you thought you needed to do first, right? Just, just to give you guys some context, the reason why I created this model in the first place was because there's, with, with the clients that I was because there's with with the clients that I work with one-on-one, we talk about a lot of stuff, we start building the stuff in the center and and the question always comes up and consistently, well, when do we build the website? When do we build the website? When do we build the website? Do you see how everything that you put on the website, everything that you blog about, everything that you offer, it all radiates out from and connects to the center? Because strategically, all those things on the outside exist for the sole purpose of moving people toward the middle. Remember that jawbreaker? It's it is a crumbly mess if you don't have it built on the solid structure in the middle, right? All right, so with visibility, this is where all of these pretty pieces on the outside come together to create that thing that's enticing, that brings people in. It's time to build your breadcrumb trail. So first, we've got to get out of our head and into theirs, okay? So you guys, let me know, which one of these says, tell me more to you? Thieves is a proprietary blend of oils that keeps your family above the wellness line. You really shouldn't buy oils from Amazon or Walmart, buy them from me. Versus, I help busy moms go from constant clutter cycle to finally breathing free in a home that stays clean. If you were standing at a cocktail party or a barbecue and somebody said one or the other to you, which one do you want to ask? Hey, what is that? Tell me more. Do you see the difference? Quick show of hands, show me that you you see the difference. We are not cheapening or leaving Young Living out. We're not hiding Young Living. We are talking into what they want, showing them context so that when you show Young Living, they're able to see what's in it for them because that's what makes them make a decision, right? All right, so once you make this shift, the whole conversation changes. People start listening, they start telling their friends about what you do and people start seeking you out and it becomes easy to talk about, blog about, post about what you do. And I mean, now, let's talk about this. How does this actually start to translate to what you email, what you post, what you put on your blog, what goes on social and so on? The only answer to this question of what do I write is what does that person want to know? And your hint is that it is the stuff that you already know and that you're probably obsessed with learning more about, okay? And it's going to tie into directly into the stuff that's at the core. It's going to radiate out from that, it's going to be related to that. So let's talk about some examples here. And just a tip, you guys, make an outline of this, continually add to it as you get ideas. Create a Trello board to map this out. Have this be an ongoing exercise for you so that you can continue to explore the different topics and subjects that you can be writing about to be of greater service to the people that you ultimately want to attract to you. Because that's really the point here, right? We're serving them with content that helps them get something that they want, inviting them to get something better and then and then repeating that until we're on a phone call with them and we sign them up with Young Living. Okay, so list the things that they're struggling with. What are they Googling literally? Get in their head, what are they looking for? What are they searching for answers to? What are they not able to figure out on their own? And then list out the micro steps of your unique offer. This is another really great thing to do is if you actually point out, I do step one, step two, step three, step four, break down the components of those steps. There are little pieces of that that you can go out and talk about. Those are seeds for your content. I'll give you some examples here. Obsessed with organizations, the same one we were talking about earlier. So the core is a three-week decluttering challenge that gets oiled. The funnel is from the the third week, we're going to create a Pinterest worthy palace on a budget with my cheap decor checklist. Content, we're going to offer simple recipes. This is going to go in blogs, social videos and so on, all right? Simple recipes, DIY recipes, hacks, design inspiration, shopping lists. All right, so here's some examples of say like blog posts or videos. Closet organization 101, DIY plant hangers, the five best interior design magazines in 2020, 25 things from Target that look 10 times more expensive than they are. Do you guys see how that content connects to the funnel that connects to the core? Quick show of hands, are you are you seeing how those things connect? Do you see how we we don't have to blog about oils? We don't have to blog about Young Living at all. In fact, we shouldn't because that's what Young Living does, right? Once people are in, they can follow the Young Living blog. They don't need you to be the, you know, the funnel to Young Living unless, of course, you are their their upline, in which case, yes, absolutely disseminate information to those people, but not the people who aren't in yet, right? We got to talk about the things that they care about that they're looking for answers to. All right, they find that content and they hear about how you help people. Then they identify themselves as one of those people that you help and then they become a lead in your funnel. You offer them a solution. They already know that they want this solution. They've had a taste of it already. This is the offer at the core. And like the rest of your life, that solution at the core is gonna be oily, right? So what unique thing will you offer? What is your unique value that you're going to put at the core of what you do? And do you see how you can start getting people curious? Maybe just quick show of hands, are you starting to see how you can get people curious about what you have to say, what you have to do? So that you, again, the point of all of this, guys, is to just make more friends so that you can have more leads, so that you can introduce more people to Young Living, right? So what are you going to help them accomplish? What can you help them solve that they would be so happy to have solved? And what win will you give away to prove that you really are in this to help them first? What mini conversations will you start with your content that then point them toward the win that they're looking for? So here are some helpful tips for you. First, when you're thinking about your core, don't try to make it all encompassing. This does not have to be the end-all be-all, it does not have to be huge. If you have, you know, you've created a huge result for yourself and maybe in the way of wellness, don't think that you are going to do a complete overhaul here, right? It's it's actually not something that you have to do at the outset and it actually tends to work better, especially if you're just getting started, if you create something that's a little smaller, because you could always repeat this process, okay? You can create multiple cores like this and so long as those things are a part of you and what you're about, you can have as many as you want, but you know, make make one successful first before you start spinning another plate. And if it's something that's tied to your life story, it fits. If it's something that you deeply truly care about, it fits. Don't just design stuff like this for the sole purpose of trying to make a sale because people could sniff that right out, okay? And if you're tech overwhelmed, I want to encourage you, keep it simple. This does not have to be something that's fully automated. You don't have to have a ton of bells and whistles. In fact, the results that you help them get are always going to be more important than bells and whistles. Think about it like this. If you have this idea in your head, you create an outline, maybe you give the outline away and maybe you work with people one-on-one through this process just so that you're confident in how you do it. And then you eventually might want to turn it into a course, but you can start with how it is right now, what you have in your mind right now and just steadily start creating this kind of thing. All right, so now we are going to move over to some new website updates. We'll get into some Q and A if you guys had questions about the content today after Greg shares some really, really exciting news with you guys. So Greg, I'm going to make you co-host so that you are able to share.
Super. All right, I'm the co-host, let's see here. Click, 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 share my screen. Okay, so two big changes from last week now. We have the, this is just one of the built-in themes for the USA market. All the, I believe, USA market themes now have, if you scroll down, there is a section for the holiday catalog. So you can click on that either here or the view button. And then there's order now, which sends them to the signup link, your membership signup link. Where they can, of course, purchase it. So that's always exciting. This will automatically go away, I think, on December 25th or somewhere around that time. So you don't have to worry about taking it off. And the other, I guess, maybe, you know, depending on who you are, this may be more exciting, maybe it won't be, but we'll see. So the discussion rooms, we've had a request quite often, actually, like, hey, can we get the videos? I'd like to post videos, I'd like to share videos in the discussion rooms. And of course, you've always been able to do that in the member area with a page. You could post a video in there, no problem. But now, I don't know, you probably noticed this has been alive for a few days already. But the member area now will recognize if you've pasted in a video link and will automatically show the video down here. So I'll just, let me grab one of these and I'll show you how this works. So I grabbed the link to one of these videos. I think this was our our weekly work session from last week. Take a look at my new video and then just paste in the link. This happens to be YouTube. But yeah, check this out, it'll just pop up there and now it shows that preview in there, which is, yeah, that's it's a game changer because they don't have to click and pop over to YouTube or wherever. So this does support YouTube, Vimeo, Wistia. And there's a newer one that we've been getting some requests from. There's this tool called Searchy. Basically, what they do, it's a it's a separate service, but they allow you to search the audio within your videos, which is kind of cool. So we've been getting some customers who've been requesting that. So it does support those four, I believe, in terms of like links that you can paste in here. So and the other cool thing, you can, as you can see here, if you put in multiple video links, it will actually list them all out. You know, probably don't want to get too crazy with this, like post 100 or something, but you know, for two or three or whatever, it'll totally work fine. And yeah, so I'm super excited about that change. It really makes the discussion room more engaging to have the videos going right in there. So that's what we've got this week. Think back over to you, Ashley.
Awesome, thank you. You guys, this is huge, right? Who's excited to be able to actually share video in your discussion room, in your Get Oiling vault? This is so big. I I think this is kind of the one thing that we, I don't know, sort of like the final touch. Because I sometimes you kind of want to do a one-for-one trade-off between, you know, moving something over from Facebook. And we do have to fundamentally look at it a little differently. You know, because it's not exactly the same thing and it actually is better if you set it up the right way. So this is something that can allow you to just link video in and the video can still be elsewhere in your vault as well. It's really exciting. All right, so we're going to do really quickly, excuse me, a couple of website reviews. Michelle Hayman, are you here? Maybe raise your raise your hand for me. Oh, actually, hold on, I'm lowering hands. Michelle, would you raise your hand for me again, please? Okay. I believe I've got you, Michelle Hayman, right? Okay, I think this is you. Older version of Zoom. Hmm, okay, I'm going to make you a panelist. I hope this is you and you don't have like a maiden name or something. Are you the correct Michelle? Hi, you are. Unmute yourself, please. Hey, it's good to see you, how are you?
Good, you?
Good, good. I'm excited to share your website. Tell us about what kind of feedback you would like to have.
Um, all of it, gently?
Okay, let's do it. You've done an excellent, excellent job here in in getting this a big right here. So helping you step out of the shadows and start walking in your light. I help women realize their potential, step away from their past and rock their future. Michelle, this copy is extraordinary, very good job. Grab my guide and start shining today, six steps to taking back your confidence. Michelle, this is so good. Okay, six ways to help you take back your confidence, get instant access. So I would, I would maybe expand this just a tiny bit more. What we are doing here is, the kind of crunchy family like that. We we are still at the point where we're trying to help them understand that it's a really good idea to like share their email and maybe even their phone with you. So share a little bit more here about what what it'll do for them. I think that would be helpful for you. All right, and you could also, for what it's worth, make that a pop-up on this page.
There should be one that comes up.
Okay, okay, cool, cool. Well, so then what you want to do is for this button, if it's the same offer, then you want to have a hashtag lead in the URL for this button instead of having it direct off to another to another page.
Gotcha.
Oh, this is great, this is so great. All right, so we got blog, you've done a really nice job here with your with your branding. This is good, okay? One thing I would recommend, if you don't have a totally white background here, is you can do a circular crop on your images. What did you use to make your images?
Canva.
Okay, I actually don't know how to do it in Canva, but what I do, and I don't know, I have the craziest like hacks. I am, I am a graphic design hack. I'm not actually really good. But what I do is I actually download from Canva and then I do a an elliptical crop, like I pull a circle and then crop it in preview on a Mac. And I don't know what the thing, anyway, if you Google circular crop, it'll be fine. But that'll keep this from looking like a like a square in the background. It's easy to do, you can Google it. All right, vibe, what is this vibe?
Like a wooden pipe.
Oh, it's like an inhaler.
Yeah.
How neat, very cool. I like that. All right, and then shop, that's going to go to?
Right now, it's going to go to the oils, but I'm going to take it out and put something different. I just haven't figured out what.
This is a perfectly great thing for you to put here. For those of you who don't know, if you go to your get oiling URL dot com forward slash starter dash kits, you got a page just like this one. Pretty, pretty cool, awesome. And then contact, there we go, that's good. Michelle, this is excellent.
Yay.
Yeah, this is, this is really, really, really good. You know what you're doing. So what you want to make sure that you do is that when you're getting out there and you're sharing content on your blog, for instance, is is I would encourage you to take this to, you know, take this another step further. Obviously, right now, this is sort of a peek into your life with you guys going to Topgolf. But maybe, you know, what you want to think about is, you know, what was a, I don't know, it was like a takeaway. What's something that the person that that you really want to be connecting with? Like, was there a lesson learned? Was there a secret that you uncovered? Was it, was there some kind of a thing to take away? And then you want to kind of have that be the title, right? Every piece of content that you create, even even if it is something, I mean, if every now and then you're just going to have something that's like, oh, hey, by the way, this is me and my family. And that's perfectly okay. But let me see, let's go back, let's go to another one.
I definitely struggle with the titles.
That's okay, this is, I mean, great copywriters struggle with titles too. And you're you're doing a really good job. So all right, messy house, messy thoughts. Okay, so think about, actually, one of the things that you can consider doing is when you're writing your blog post, think about how you might be able to structure it as a how-to. There are a couple of things that get people wanting to read more and engage more. How to get a thing done, a number and then a thing, right? So seven ways to or seven things. I, when people see numbers, their brain wants to open that article so they could just see what those seven things are. So take advantage of that kind of natural curiosity. And remember that when you are making content like this, you are writing from a place of authority. You know something, you've got a thing at the core, right? And so now that you're, you know, you you know a little bit more about what this core is, you know, then what you do is, is you you think about, just to start with one piece from it to make your funnel, right? And then what you're going to do is just think about all the different things that a person who would love to have that thing is is wanting to know that you already know, right? So how do you, how do you get the kids to clean up after themselves? There's an article, right?
Yeah.
I mean, if you've got that figured out, I mean, if you do.
I was gonna ask you.
Lord, no. I was gonna say, I need, I need a private conversation with you, if you know how. That does not happen. Okay, yeah. That's, I swear, if we could talk, that's, that's like the only thing that works. If you're watching this and you know, you've got two potential customers here, if you know how to get this thing done, we're here. All right, so you've, you've done an excellent job here. I would get, again, make the link right here, hashtag lead, that'll pop your form right now. Oh, there it is. Girlfriend, it's time to say. There it is. So you, the way you have it set up is when someone tries to leave the page, it pops up. So get my guide, six ways to take back your confidence, the world needs you right now. So again, just just start thinking about maybe just a couple, maybe two, three bullet points of what they'll be able to do once they have this thing. Because remember, your lead magnet is all about giving them a win that's tied to the ultimate solution that you know how to offer them. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Awesome, yeah, you're, you're good, you're doing great.
Thank you.
Feel good to hear that, need some validation for all your hard work.
We have been on a journey, have we not?
We have, and you have made it to a wonderful place and I thank you for being willing to share that with everybody.
Thank you.
You take care. All right, that was excellent, you guys, wasn't it? All right, Lisa Bruegger, where are you at, Lisa? Got you down for a review as well. If I can find you with your hand up. I believe this is you, if it'll let me, it's like it's not showing me. All right, I'm, I'm going to hope that this is the right Lisa. Hi, Lisa, how are you?
Hello.
All right, did I get you right, the right Lisa on the list?
Yes, yes.
Excellent, thank you for being here today. Tell me a little bit. Excellent. Thank you for being here today. Tell me a little bit about the feedback you're looking for.
Okay, so outside of this website, I, I'm okay with. I have, I have struggled with actually turning this in and making it more, more lead magnet-ish content specific. It's just very basic. I mean, I've got my stuff at the bottom, but I just don't know how to turn your site into my site.
Okay, okay.
And make it, I mean, because this is not, this is as close as I can get, but it's not something I would, it's not me at all.
Right, right.
The things are, I can't figure it out. I mean, really, it just needs a lot of work and I don't know what to do.
Okay, well, let me, let me ask you this. Have you, have you invested at all in any of the, any of our member courses around, let's just say like Martha's Go for Gold, or maybe like the Website Homepage course from Ally Dean? Have you done any of those?
I've got Martha's courses.
Okay, so if you have Go for Gold.
And a ton of other, and a ton of other social media stuff.
Okay, okay.
All of that. So I've got them all. I've got, I've got all of that. It's just somehow implementing into this site and using this, I need help.
Okay, got you. So you've watched the, our training today where we're talking about kind of figuring out what's at the core and then building the structure beyond it, right? Just, just so you know, in Go for Gold, like Martha and I, we work very, very similarly. In Go for Gold, you learn not just what's at the center, but who the person is that you serve, how you serve them. And then we show you, because we co-created the modules for, for Go for Gold, it actually shows you literally how to set it all up and get oiling. So by the very last module of Go for Gold, you have a template that you can edit for your very own front page of your website that looks nothing like this, that can look like anything, like, like I'd say the example of Michelle's that I just showed you. Is one example. And we've got a lot of other ones on the FAQ section of our homepage. So if you have Go for Gold, any of you, if you, anyone watching, if you have Go for Gold and you have not implemented every step of it through to completion, please go back and do it, because it's actually going to show you everything that you need to know to use our entire system, really, with this, with the strategy that Martha and I both teach. So.
That's helpful. I started out with another one of her courses and did that one first, and actually in the midst of that one.
Okay, are you, you're based Revolution?
Builders.
Bring on the builders. Okay, yeah, yeah. So, so yeah, go back and do Go for Gold, because that's going to provide you with the entire business structure and system with which to do all of the other things. It is, it's sort of the baseline, because it shows you how to use the platform to build everything that you need. And then, of course, at any step, if you're going through and you're working through this process, if you need feedback on your copywriting, on the design of your page, if you feel like you're stuck with an element of it or something like that, you could always come on to a review like this one, where we can go through, go through it together and make sure that it is, you know, working the way that you want it to.
So, so the idea behind it is, is that this website, my oily site, is actually hidden inside the other one, yes? It's hidden in there.
Yeah, yeah.
So the tabs aren't there, none of that's there unless they go specifically into a specific tab in it. So it's literally an entire website built out with this linked into it.
That's right. And you get to strategically decide who sees what and when.
Okay, so I could have linked this with my, somehow I've built, I have an actual creatively Lisa website.
Oh, okay.
It's my art, that's, that's my blogs, that's literally, it's got a, an order, a, a, a form to want to link with me, you name it, all kinds of business stuff, but not oily stuff. So there's got to be a way that I could maybe combine the two together even, without having to redo everything.
Without a doubt, without a doubt. We are really kind of the most, in terms of our software in general, both for, for Get Oiling, and we have a separately branded one for coaches who are not in Young Living. We, we have really the most complete platform that's out there, especially at this price point, my goodness, that, that has your, you know, your communications hub at the center, your contact management, as well as ways to not only attract and communicate with clients, but also to, to serve and sell. And of course, you have the ability to have everything integrated in with Young Living as well, built into the site, lots of great important shortcuts. If you're building a business with Young Living and you want a duplicating team, really any of the resources that you use to do the things that I was just teaching on today, that is something that you can literally create as resource bundles and share with your team, so that they can cut their learning curve in half, and you can show them how to do the things you do and truly duplicate in action. So, so yeah, definitely. And I mean, just reach out to our team. If you've already got sort of an established brand and business, and you're trying to figure out, you know, how migrations might work, or you know, how things could work together, or how you might even be able to seamlessly move things over, you know, so that everything is cohesive, we'd be thrilled to work with you on that. So just, just reach out to support and we can kind of connect you in the right direction, maybe for a call.
Okay, that's, that, that will save me a lot of extra steps that I've already done.
I would think so. I would think so. Thank you for coming on, Lisa, and I look forward to seeing your future work.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Uh huh. Okay. All right. So we have some questions in the Q and A, or see, our team has been quite busy answering questions, guys, if, just while we're still here for these last few minutes, if you have questions, make sure they're in the Q and A, so I don't miss any of them. All right. So Lynn asked, I set up classes in my member group. What would be the purpose of meeting a vault also for classes? So inside of a Get Oiling member area, and I mean, if you're talking about a member group, I don't know if you're talking about Facebook or Get Oiling, but if your member group is on Get Oiling, then it is in a vault. Okay, so vault is basically what everything lives inside of in your member area. Your member area can have any number of vaults. What's in those vaults are your discussion rooms, your classes, your pages, that kind of thing. All right. All right. Angela says, I'm doing Go for Gold. Have they updated the courses to the website building with the new features? So everything that's in Go for Gold, in terms of it teaching you how to do the various things, is still relevant. So I would still go through Go for Gold. There are lots of additional features that we have that you can play around with to optimize what you're doing. What we do in Go for Gold is give you a basic framework and templates that you can use, things that were recommended by Martha, that she uses herself, you know, with different types of strategy linked to that. So that's all up to date. You know, really what the point of it is, is to get you into action, because you're not going to want to keep it exactly as we have designed it, or with the words that we used for it, but it's to give you an opportunity to create something that's your own, without having to stare at a blank page, and that connects directly to the strategy that you follow in Go for Gold. All right. So when do you give the checklist? In the beginning, or during the challenge, or the end, when you make an offer at the end of the challenge to get started? So Lisa, in this instance, the challenge could be, and this is the thing, the challenge we're talking about is at the core of the strategy, right? So that, the core of that jawbreaker model. That is a thing that you have a couple of options of interacting with, right? A lot of folks will have a challenge that they maybe put a dollar amount on. They say this challenge is worth this amount of money. They could charge that. If you run a challenge inside of Get Oiling, you can charge for people to enter a vault. And so you can take payment there. You could actually offer a challenge as a thing that people pay money for. You could also offer it for free, but only to the people who purchase the products that are necessary to get started. That's a really popular model as well. It really just depends on you and your business. Now, when we're talking about the checklist, giving away the checklist, that was the thing from week three. That's actually a thing that we offer. So on my blog post about the 25 things that target that look 10 times more expensive than they actually are, I'm going to have, at the very bottom of that, a link that says, hey, if you love this, you're going to love this thing that I made. It actually comes from a challenge that I run. It's the, you know, how to create a pin worthy palace on a budget. If you love this, you're going to go, love that, go check it out. And you're giving it away right away. You're giving away that checklist, that piece of the core. You're giving that to them to establish trust, to show and prove that what you have in the challenge is relevant to them, so that they're already sold on the challenge by the time you talk to them. The way I would structure this, if you aren't comfortable yet, or don't want to run a challenge that you charge people for, then you basically just have a quick chat with them to vet them, you know, make sure the challenge is a fit for them. Only talk to people about getting them started in the challenge if they have opted in to get that freebie, because they've had a little taste of it, right? And, and then of course, you let them know, all right, look, so I have, you know, a couple of options here. I could have, I could just be charging this, but, charging for this. But really, all I want is for you to get the results. There's a couple of products that I use in this that I actually earn income off of when I sell them. You could just buy those in lieu of purchasing the, purchasing the challenge. And there, maybe there's some people who are like, yeah, I just want to buy it from you, then, you know, put a price tag on it and sell it. There's a couple of different options there, but you're giving the checklist away to build trust. That is your lead magnet. They become your lead in order to get that thing. All right. Where do we do our challenge? I say do your challenge in Get Oiling, get it in a Get Oiling vault. That way, you know that people can see what you're putting out there. You can create challenges that you can run on an evergreen basis. There is, oh gosh, what is that link? Let me make sure I have this right. If you're in Go for Gold, then actually, you know what? If you're in Go for Gold, there is a link inside of Go for Gold for a 28 day challenge course that I created, that actually shows you how to create a challenge. So that's a bonus. If you're in Go for Gold, it shows you how to create a challenge in Get Oiling. So that's actually there. And if you go to Go for Gold, it's already free for you. All right. Best, best place to run the challenge in Get Oiling is going to be in a vault. You can, and if you're in the 28 day challenge vault that we have, that was a bonus for Go for Gold, that is, that's something that you can set up to just be live calls, and then you just put the live call recordings onto a page. Another thing that you could do, and this is something I think that Jackie did on, on one of the, the challenges around the time that we ran that course, is that she, ahead of time, for the whatever period of time the challenge was, I think hers was like 30 days of gratitude, or something like that, she filmed a short video for every day, and she put those into an online class, and then had people go in every day and watch a video, and then perform some kind of accountability step. So there's a number of different ways you can do it. Robbie, if you would like to hop on a chat with me sometime and talk about working with me, reach out to our support and they can hook you up with that application. All right, Tammy says, just challenge invite, go into public posts or the lead group. So if you are running a challenge, you want to talk about it widely. You, you don't just talk about the challenge to, you know, just to people who are, let's just say, for instance, you know, in your funnel, you, you might have people getting curious about the challenge just by posting about it on your wall, or to your email list, or on your blog, and so on. So when you are talking about the challenge, the benefits of the challenge, I help busy moms go from constant clutter to, you know, a stress fee, stress-free home that stays clean. You know, going out and talking about that anywhere, everywhere, to everyone, and telling them to tell their friends about it is the right thing to do. Because now you're talking about something that people want. And when they say, ooh, tell me more, and you say, well, come over here, I'll show you. That's, that's exactly what we're trying to do here. It's the whole point. All right, Dee says, so is the core one thing, or one topic, or subject? Multiple things on the one subject? The thing at the core, Dee, could be anything. The thing at the core, and I think this is what I listed off, it could be a sequence of steps. So remember, like, something that you know how to do, right? You are teaching someone to get a result that you know how to get. So whether that is one step, it's probably not. Whether that is four key concepts, whether that is seven steps, whether that is a series of habits and a support group, however you think it would be best to teach someone to get a result that you know how to get, that's what the core is, whatever those steps are, and of course, how you oil them. All right. Gabriella says, I do cooking with essential oils. If I do Young Living, but also do Pampered Chef, could I hyperlink some of the kitchen equipment to send to my Pampered Chef website too? That, I mean, technically, to answer your question, technically, yes, you can hyperlink to send off to other products. You will probably, I mean, if it's private, it's, it's probably fine. I don't know. You do want to make sure that you check in with compliance about visibly co-promoting potentially competing companies. Just make sure that you are, are clear on that, so you don't get yourself into any potential issues. All right. Hello, Kusa. What do you think about using other people's content for your blog, like an article? As so long as you are providing accreditation, what you are sharing is relevant to them, you're good, right? I think it's, I think it's actually a really great thing to do, to edify and to link to other people. After you have linked to that person, reach out to them and say, hey, I just shared, you know, this article of your content on my blog. I think that this is something that my audience would find very helpful. You know, if you're ever interested in having people guest post on your blog, I'd be happy to do it. I think I have some things that, you know, could be helpful to your audience as well. You may very well be able to go and get some of their audience following you as well, by the two of you working together. So yeah, definitely do that, but then reach out to them and be strategic about it. Rachel says, when creating a blog, can you include a lead magnet in that? Or is a lead magnet just from a landing page? So when you're linking to a lead magnet, it is the landing page that you're linking. The landing page is what makes them become a lead, right? Landing, where they land is where they put in their name and their email, and then they get the lead magnet after. So if you're writing a blog, you want to offer a lead magnet, a funnel, you're going to be sharing the link to the landing page that offers that lead magnet. Carrie says, I have a video that has nothing to do with oils that is getting a lot of views. Could I attach a lead magnet to it without the Go for Gold templates? Okay, so in Go for Gold, we have templates that teach you how to make a funnel. That is, you know, creating your lead magnet. In that particular case, I showed you how to make like an article style lead magnet on a custom page that you have behind a landing page that has a campaign attached to it. What you would want to be offering in the description of that video, for instance, if it's on YouTube, is a link where you say, hey, if you love this video, you'll love this other thing that I've got here. I made a guide that shows you X, Y, and Z. Then whatever the guide is that shows them X, Y, and Z, put it on the other side of a landing page, just like we show you in Go for Gold, share the landing page in the description box. So you can use the templates from Go for Gold. Just make sure that, that what you're offering is relevant to the people who are watching that video. What are the things that they want to know? How can you help them? All right. Would you keep mentioning, I'm sorry, would you keep product mentions to your core offerings? Meaning not mentioning Young Living at all, unless they get to the core. I wouldn't be strict about that. I don't think that there's any harm in the world knowing that you've used and love Young Living products. I think it's actually advantageous for you every now and then to, especially if you're making recipes, for instance, you know, or, or you've got a diffuser blend that literally is a thing that helps you get an important thing done that you think people would benefit from knowing about, then, then include it. But just don't make it the thing that you do all the time. Like, don't blog to share Young Living. Blog to help someone share a problem, solve a problem. And, and then of course, if a product that you actually use and love comes up, then mention it. But, you know, 80, 80, 20, or I don't know, you could actually do more than that. Just make sure that the impetus is actually helping them solve a problem, and not just to promote product. Rhonda says, this is what I was wondering, do I need to make an account with one of those services to go to that? Rhonda, I'm not quite sure what you mean by that. If you would like to resend that, I'd be happy to answer and help you. All right, Dee says, so my offering or core is emotional healing. I share my entire healing journey, resources, and how, how to and roadmap for others. Right now I have one class and worksheet, and want to expand out from that plan to create a vault and course. So that is the core, the course. Yes, absolutely. At the core can be a course. I wasn't teaching it from that perspective today, because a lot of people aren't necessarily interested yet in expanding into other revenue streams. You know, if you're just here today because you love Young Living and you want to have more success growing Young Living, you don't have to become a course creator to do it. But the truth is, if you have a coaching program, or you have a course, if it's group coaching, one-on-one coaching, if it's, you know, a, a quick course or a big course, doesn't matter. All of those things are things that are not in a straight line between your person and a Young Living product. They're a thing that helps them get what they want, so that they're open to the Young Living recommendation that you need, right? So this, you're, you're kind of thinking about Young Living, and this instance is sort of an affiliate product. If you look at it the same way as you would if you were recommending an instant pot with an Amazon link, or something like that, except you do have the ability to dive deeper and to actually oil your content in the course, which I highly recommend that you do. So yeah, you can, you can definitely see that course as being the thing at the core. Because what does the course do? It helps this type of person get this result. So that person is going to want to take your recommendations. If you're like, all right, look, if we're here for emotional healing, I'm going to give away my five-minute morning meditation that clears the way to a peaceful day for me. And so they get that meditation, and maybe you invite them into. And so they get that meditation, and maybe you invite them into a challenge where they do that meditation every day for two weeks, so that they can be accountable and make sure that they do it, because we drop the ball and they'll get reminders, right? And be encouraged. And then at the close of that, how much better is their life? Now they're going to see, if you say, hey, look, I really think that using frankincense elevates this meditation that I do, they're going to be so much more likely to want to go get frankincense and the frankincense you recommend, because you've already helped them get something that was important to them. All right, Dee says, yes, because oils were instrumental in emotional healing, and I do that in one workshop. Yeah, absolutely. Just make sure that this is about their outcome and not about your sale. Okay, I think that is it.
Yeah, I just wanted to pop in here and say, there was somebody who pointed out that Canada also published the holiday catalog. So while you were doing Q and A, I got that added to the Canadian sites, so that's out there now. Thank you.
Fabulous. All right, who's excited to share that?
And somebody actually had a question about that in chat, like, if they don't want to use the built-in themes, but they want to like link to it or whatever, you can totally do that. Just grab the link that's on the built-in theme. You can even use the image if you want to. It's not Young Living branded or whatever. So totally put that on a custom page and you can make your own holiday catalog page if you want.
Fabulous. All right, thank you guys for being here today, sticking around and asking such great questions. This will be available for you in YouTube, and I will provide you with some slides to download so that you can reference this in the future as well. All right, so, hey, team. Everybody have a great week, and we're excited to see you on the next one.
Thanks, everybody. Bye.
Have a great day.